A little late.
That's snow.
Didn't say how late.
Yeah, that's snow on the ground though. Why am I not there?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and get started. All right. We're gonna go ahead and call it January sixteenth, twenty twenty four, Bay Saint Louis City Council meeting together at um five thirty two P M. If you would stand for a prayer and pledge please. Mister Lewis will lead us in prayer.
We just bow our heads, amen to the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Lord, we thank you for another opportunity to be here today. We want to continue to do your blessings and your goodwill. We ask that you pray for everybody in this room tonight and everybody in our community. Pray for all those that have guided away from the path. Help them to get back onto the path. For those that have lost their way, please send the Holy Spirit to help cast out darkness, bring in light. We just ask that you continue to surround us with your love and uh and again, we want to ensure that all of our dialogue that we have here tonight and in general, that we do so under your grace. And keep in mind, it may not be uh you know what somebody, the encounter we have with individuals may not be, you know, they may not remember that, but they do remember how you made that individual feel. So allow us to teach, yeah, allow us to to treat everybody with dignity and respect. And we'll just end that on our Father, our Father.
Lord.
That will be our name. Like kingdom come, thou will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Let me just to declare, if United States of America, to the Republic of Washington, one nation, one in the ground.
Thank you, everyone. Um, I don't see a big crowd, so I'm guessing the word got out that the Murphy application was withdrawn today. So. By the applicant, yes.
Yeah. And also, Tish asked to put hers off that she had a bad fall and um unable to attend an hour for tonight. So that'd be pushed back to February.
Okay, so that's gonna be off the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay, for the chamber at least, also withdrawn. Um, agenda amendments, uh see.
I would actually go ahead and say to remove, to make a motion to remove item, what is that, whatever that was, off the consent agenda.
It was removed already.
Oh, it was already removed?
Yes, it was already removed, yes. Uh amendment to the agenda, we need to add this for under mayor.
Yes, please.
Under mayor's report, we add Stevens' report. Any other agenda amendments needed by the council administration? No guests, so we'll go to Plannin' Zoning. Item A is motion to follow Plannin' Zoning's recommendation and approve the application for variance to construct a dwelling submitted by Craig Borderline located at four eight Saint George Street. Um, is the applicant present? Anybody in opposition to the application? What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to approve uh follow Plannin' Zoning's recommendation and approve.
Motion, Mister Hoffman, to follow Plannin' Zoning's recommendation and approve. Do I have a second? Second, Mister Seal. Any discussion? Vote to motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye. Motion passes four two. B, motion to follow Plannin' Zoning's recommendation and approve variance to add in addition to the current dwelling submitted by Ann Smith located at one oh two Carroll Avenue. Approved five zero by Plannin' Zoning. Anybody here representing the application? Okay. Anybody here in opposition to the application? What's the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to follow the recommendation of Plannin' Zoning and approve.
Motion, Mister Hoffman, follow P and Z recommendation and approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mister Seal. Any discussion?
Yep, uh Mister President, I just have a quick question. Miss Smith, can you just clarify, so what you're wanting to do, these, of course, we we know the background of this, but you're just adding on, you're basically renovating the current house on that property, correct? Okay, and you're using that footprint or are you, you're not adding on, extending anything, you're just using that current current footprint that's current?
The footprint that I have.
Okay.
Uh, we're just, right, it has a carport right now, just studied, but as far as the variance, we're not adding, moving any.
No exterior.
No, nothing more that, you know, it's the same plot thing, because the variance and everything that's all like three points forward, we're just doing the exact same thing. We're not changing it, it's basically coming to get a uh, it's expired, it's basically approved by some.
Just updated.
Back, up, correct.
It was approved by HPC as well.
Yes, okay. Any further discussion? Vote to motion.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes six zero, thank you all.
Thank you.
C, motion to follow Plannin' Zoning's recommendation and approve the application for variance to construct a single family dwelling and to allow a one foot variance resulting in seven foot setback on both side yards submitted by Grand Homes LLC located at two 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 four Mole Drive. Um, the applicant is present here and he submitted a letter stating, I put one on everybody's spot, that there was some confusion when he was at the podium at Plannin' Zoning about the question asked when he agreed to the one foot instead of the three foot he was requesting originally. And he really needs the three foot original request, is what he really needs granted if we approve it. And I asked Miss Smith and she said, as long as we revert it back to the original request, we can modify.
So the original request was for the three foot variance and then P and Z is going on one foot.
Yes, I think somebody asked him if seven foot would work or something.
Well, a commission members asked me, said if you would agree to six foot, I'd go ahead and make a motion to approve it. And I said, no, I really need seven. Like, I got out in the hallway and my buddy, what did you do? They were offering you six and you said you wanted seven, I said, I don't know what I did. But anyway, I'm really asking for five because uh we're trying to draw the plan and just can't come up with a good plan being so narrow. And this is gonna be my retirement home and I'm, you know, I want it to be nice. And uh, I don't see how it'd impact the houses on either side. I mean, one house is like forty feet from the property line, the other one's at least twenty five.
We did have two opposition letters on that, that was on on file. Let's see here, so. Two 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 four mole, I think.
Is anybody speaking in opposition?
Two 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 six and two 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 two.
Two 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 two, yeah, on each side, so I guess, um, I don't, is anybody here present to speak on this opposition? I guess just the letters they submitted was opposition. Um, what's the pleasure of the council?
So, just to be clear, so what kind of setback they asking for?
He's asking for five foot side yard on each side.
Instead of eight yard.
Instead of eight foot.
So he's asking for a three foot variance, correct?
Three foot variance, yes, three foot variance.
Plannin' zoning approved a one foot variance.
And again, I I'm getting mixed up now, but this lot has been this, you know, for many, many years before the new ordinance was approved with the new building code. Two thousand six, this lot is fifty years old. So uh, at one time, all of this property was mine, the left, the left side house, the right side house. And uh my parents needed some money, so I bought it from them. Then I gave it back to my mother, said, here, do what you want with it. Next thing I know, my sister's got a big old huge lot and I got a little video lot. So I'm like, what happened here?
Favorite child.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Um.
Okay.
In fact, uh, this this property's been in the family for about seventy five.
And it wouldn't need to go back to P and Z due to the fact that it was advertised correctly, it was not voted upon of what the request was, so it wouldn't need to go back to P and Z though?
No.
No, it does not have to go back to Plannin'.
That's why I asked.
As long as it was advertised correctly, you can modify what P and Z does. They're just, all P and Z's doing is making a recommendation.
Yeah, so we can go back to the original request and approve that.
His ori- his original request and advertised was the three foot variance to five.
Yeah, so we're within guidelines if we go there, so. So if somebody want to, the motion have to be to modify Plannin' Zoning's recommendation and to allow the original ask of the three foot variance. On each side.
And that's what was advertised?
Yes, sir, yes. Yeah, that's what was advertised in the packet and then they got there, I guess, discussion that it changed. I couldn't get in the door, I was in the hallway.
On on this map that we've got here, what is showing at the three, three and a half feet from the property line on two 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 two? I guess if you're looking at the gravel drive, the one to the right, it's showing a some sort of structure with a three point six plus or minus.
See what you're talking about, Gene, but I can't tell what it is.
I can't tell if it's there or just an old slab or nothing, or it's just a notation on the survey.
That was uh, that was a carport at one time, I could clean it, took it down.
Yeah, that would make sense, because it doesn't look on Geoportal, it doesn't look like the structure next door is.
So there is no structure there necessarily?
No.
Closest structures, twenty feet away or forty feet away on that side?
I think it's more like twenty five feet on the right hand.
On that side and forty on the other side.
Excuse me.
I just, I mean, the lady on the left hand side, Miss uh Locklear, she called me last year and said that uh saw rats running around on my lot because it was overgrown. So to be a good neighbor, I went and cleared it, cut the grass, spent twenty three hundred dollars to clear it. She called me and told me about how nice it was, thanked me. About two days later, she called me and said, I want you to replace my thirty year old fence. I'm like, what? This this fence has been through three hurricanes, you want me to buy you a new fence, it's thirty years old? So I think that's the reason she sent the letter.
Yes, sir, okay, um, what's the pleasure of the council? Do I have a motion? Anybody want to approve the one foot one?
You've gotta take action one way or the other.
One way or the other.
Yes.
Deny, approve, or?
So I'll make a motion to to deny uh the recommendation uh for the original request of the variance of uh three feet um as well as the previous approval from Plannin' Zoning of one foot.
Here's deny an application, you don't have to specify, just a motion to deny an application.
So, a motion by Mister Lewis to deny the application.
Let me ask something, would you consider five feet on one side and eight feet on the other?
We're already in a motion. Yes, sir, I'll be up to the person that just made the motion, if he would consider alternative or not. Okay, no, sir, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mister No Block. Any further discussion?
So this is just outright denial of the application is written?
Yes, sir. So no variances issued, back to the original plat. Any further discussion, vote to motion?
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
So what's the reason I'm being taken down here?
So we also following, you know, there has been a uh a recommendation measuring that there's not a undue hardship that's been defined in this application as well.
I mean, hardship is I can't get a plan, if I don't, if I can't draw a nice plan, yeah, I got a worthless piece of property. And like I said, this is, this has been a lot, twenty years before you came up with this new, new rules in the two thousand and six.
I understand, sir.
At that time, I could build anything I want.
Um, yes, sir, yeah, um, unfortunately now, we have the guidelines in place, so we have to follow them and um the council made the motion and it passed it, so I'm sorry.
So what do I do now, can I bring it back to the uh plan?
Um, you could, you know, you always want.
Probably with a different type of drawing.
Yeah.
You know, try to fit the space that you have.
Well, if he does that, then he doesn't need to go back for P and Z.
Yeah, if he can fit a thirty four foot wide house in there, that's what you have to do.
This doesn't, this doesn't seem right to me that this, this has been, you know, a lot been around for seventy five years.
Sorry about that, sir, thank you. All right, motion D, motion to follow Plannin' Zoning's recommendation and approve catch plat review submitted by Tyrone Williams located at five five oh Sycamore Street, approved six zero. Um, anybody here representing this application? Anybody in opposition to the application? What's the pleasure of the council?
These seem to be all conforming, correct?
Yeah, I think.
Square foot, square foot, they're ten thousand five something, square footage was. It's front foot's fine.
Roadrunner's was good.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to prove uh.
Motion by Mister No Block, follow P and Z recommendation and approve, do I have a second? I'll make a second. Need discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, passes six zero. E was withdrawn. All right, mayor's report.
This was uh, we had contacted them a few months ago, come in, look at the fire department, fire station one with the air conditioning and all. We done some work a uh, few months back, about forty thousand dollars of work, trying to get the air conditioning system to work over there. The work that was done was needed no matter we, what we did, but evidently, the groundwater is compromised in this system because it's not able to chill. Even to the fact that we're adding water and you'll see on our utility bill over there, it's very high, we're adding our water, just makeup water to it continuously and it's still not working. So, you know, we've contacted them, they're very good, re- highly recommended to come up with a design to to go out for bids in a few, I think we can have this design in a few weeks and for a new um chilling tower and go out for bid with it after that. Um, you know, it is, it's a, it's a lengthy process to get everything done and we want to try to at least get in there, come this summertime, they'll have air conditioning in that building. Right now, they're, they're pretty much unable to sleep during the summertime in the um bunkhouse up top on the second floor and all in the rooms. Some, most of the offices on the down floor, they stays in the upper eighties, ninety degrees in there and all. So, you know, the only place we really have air conditioning over there is a little bit in the kitchen area and that's usually where they sleep in their recliners, most of them. So this is something that's very much needed and, you know, again, we've tried all type of things, had different people come in and look at it throughout time. And I think if you go back when Pat did that study for us a few years ago, you know, their recommendation back then was to do something different and all than what we have in that system, so. We're just wanting to move forward, I know it's a late, late addition to the, to the agenda, but Ronnie received it a little after four o'clock today, this, you know, and just ask him for permission to go ahead and move forward with it. Seventy five hundred dollars for there.
With the cooling tower, so is this, is that a short term fix until we have to look at a whole new system or?
Wait, what, I'm sorry.
With, just with the cooling tower, is that gonna be a short term fix until we can?
No, this is a permanent fix. And I think, you know, this, this is a cooling tower, you know, they had talked about coming in and doing away with the underground loop, this would be a chilling tower. And the, some that we have talked to is wanting to put it on a roof. This guy was pretty good, hopefully we can put it on the ground, go straight into through somewheres right out back and come in, tie into the existing pipes we got that's above ground and go in and and do what we need to do. Um, it would be a, it's my understanding, I think that, you know, they'd put in a stainless steel system, tower, you know, for the elements we have in our area. So it, this is a permanent fix, this hitting, you know, a patch job. And and the money we spent before was work that had to be done no matter what, you know, it was fanned and different things that was being replaced and all that, so.
Because them components will still be used with this system, just be different outside system, basically.
That's what we're told, and they, they, they're gonna check all that out again as well to make sure.
Right, yeah.
The underground system will be dismantled, you know.
And, yeah. Yeah, it needs to be, okay, so you need a motion to?
Prove a contract for Stevens Mechanical Engineering.
Okay, all right, do I have a motion? Motion Mister Seal, do I have a second? Mister Hoffman, may the second, any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, so the seventy five hundred, because this is the first I've seen this one, it's to build this cooling tower?
Engineer it.
To design and engineer everything to spec. And then we'll have to go out for bids, now, I wouldn't even guess, you know, I don't even wanna guess what a, a new chilling tower is gonna cost, it's gonna be way up there.
It's to design it and put it out for, for?
Yeah, we'll have to go out for bids on that. Yeah.
And there's no other way to fix this thing without going into such?
You know, we, we, we've tried, we, we've, again, we've had all people in there, um, what J E M, but it's that brother, sister, parent company that was in the last time. You know, they've done what they had to do and all, and their recommendation was also the same.
I think we had a report on that, didn't we?
Yeah.
About all the pumps and stuff that had to change and it's like, loop, loop is not effective.
You know, i- if, if you talk to the different ones that's been there, I think this has been a problem for a long time, almost since it was built. Some of them thinks the loop in the, in the system was compromised when it was installed. And that's how long, you know, some of them say it's been from the beginning. I, I don't, I don't know, but it's something that's compromised the underground system, water system.
So seventy five hundred be the design?
This is just the design and engineering, putting it, putting all specs together, what, what we need, you know, for a chilling tower.
Did they give an estimated time of when that can be completed?
No, but it's, it's months and months out.
No, the.
Because.
This part, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, this, we hope to have, we hope to have something by no later than the second meeting of February, yeah, month. Uh, uh, something to put out for bids to bring back and hopefully maybe for the first meeting of February, have something, you know, that we can get approved to go out for bids.
Okay, all right, good deal. So I had a motion by Mister Seal and second by Mister Hoffman, any further discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion passes six zero, thank you.
Thank you all. No, that's it.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
No problem, council business, uh, redistricting update, Mister Lewis.
Yes, yeah, put this on, just to get an idea, I think we have some scheduled meetings um at hand, so any idea just from a public input standpoint, obviously we're gonna iron out some of those details, but when that'll be kind of rolled out for the public, do we have any timeframe when that could be?
Probably next month, beginning of March at the latest, I don't, definitely wouldn't wanna do it. My only, my main question to you guys is, do y'all want to do a standalone workshop on a separate day? Do you wanna come in before a, because I've gotta get with my team and see um when they can be here, because I'd like for them to be, be here in person. So what are your preferences?
Before a separate day.
Separate day, I would think.
Good with the separate day workshop.
Separate day.
Yeah.
So, after everything's discussed, we'll come back and try to figure it out.
Yeah, hopefully at the next meeting, I can either narrow it down to a, a couple of different dates for the workshop and we can have something definite.
Okay, thank you. Moratorium on off premises billboards, Mister Lewis.
Uh, Mister President, I want to just bring that back up for discussion, um, and just ensuring, based on kind of how I understand the current ordinance is that we, as it stands now, the ordinance does not reflect the new annexation in, in the city. So I think it was the two point two mile radius from north second all the way down to the city line. So just wanna make sure that we don't see something that's in the new annexed area that would, you know, be within, if, if it's not specified in that distance, obviously, I think we're at the max capacity, um, based on the quantity of signs that are allowed, but just wanna make sure there's no loophole that, hey, we're in an annexed area that wasn't included in the original ordinance and then we run into another situation where there's gonna be an off.
Heather, can we just say the city line and, and take out the second street to?
Well, so, so you have two issues here. Your first being is the ordinance that Councilman Lewis is reciting, as I, we've talked about previously, is trumped by your zoning ordinance that, that does not mention, or does the zoning have two two? I'd have to go pull it, but there's a discrepancy between your ordinance and there's, and your planning and zoning.
Yes.
So your first one is make sure you look at your planning and zoning ordinance, because it was passed and there's like a catchall clause in the very end of that that says, anything that's in conflict with it, the planning and zoning ordinance changes or um trumps. So if you're gonna change something or when we tweak it, we definitely want to make sure that our ordinance and our planning and zoning go hand in hand together. Um, guessing that was just an oversight way back when, when it was passed. The second one is you will never hear me recommend a moratorium. Um, I will always recommend that you just need to go in and, I don't care what you do, if we wanna ban them all together, not allow, I, I'm fine with that, but we just need to do it via your planning and zoning ordinance, not just as a blanket pass. Because I think you can get yourselves into some legal issues with that, considering that your planning and zoning effectively gives property rights. So, probably fine making whatever changes you guys wanna make, just would prefer it to the actual document.
We need to make it to the, to the ordinance as well, go through P and Z to make a text amendment to that.
And we've discussed updating charter uses, make it by special exception every district too possibly, though, to get it through Plannin' Zoning faster.
Yeah, so there's different ways you can do it, and quite frankly, you could probably go ahead and if, if you wanted to even bring it back and rescind that ordinance that's on the book, because you don't actually need an ordinance in a planning and zoning, because, I mean, your planning and zoning isn't ordinance. And once we get all of those planning and zoning or um updated, I know y'all talked about that before, what I would, you know, where, what our angle here, what I'd like to see is your planning and zoning ordinance should be in our muni code, where it's an interactive document, just like any other ordinance that, that changes. You know, while we've had this PDF version, I, I don't know how that happened, but going forward, whenever you do adopt it, I'd wanna see that place in muni code, so then if you pull out one portion, you know, you change it, and so whoever goes online will always get the current version of our ordinance.
Well, I, I would have to say, I would be okay with a moratorium if we get sued, I, I just don't want anyone to sneak something in between the time that we have, talks with our planning and zoning public, put it out, and for someone to just come in there and then just go ahead and get a new billboard in there, that's the last thing that I wanna see.
Yeah, and that was the premise of it, because I know there was some discrepancy between the two until that's ironclad and we get those details worked out, just, I mean, the chances are probably very slim, if not nil, but, you know, there's always, always that chance until we can get that squared away, so I just wanna make sure we didn't run into the same situation um that we recently encountered.
So in, in, in the annexed areas covered by the fifteen, was it fifteen hundred feet between billboards?
Yeah, that's state rule.
I know it's in our, I think it's our building, our zoning ordinance as well.
Correct.
For, for, for the, so a catchall right, just the two point four miles was in the initial one, but the other one also states it.
So everything on six oh three is under state rule? And, but the city does have a three hundred square foot ordinance on the size of the billboard, so they couldn't come back with a fourteen by, by forty or something like that, you know?
But doesn't our ordinance say fifteen hundred feet apart?
Yes, I haven't gone count fifteen hundred feet on six oh, I don't know.
Well, I'm just saying, would that, would that help, I mean, would, could you put another one on six oh three?
So that's what the answer, I don't know, you'd have to get on.
Right, could you legally put another one anyway?
Oh, I think you could squeeze a couple more out there.
Six oh three, we take the right side of six oh three, most of the way from Longfellow.
Well, some of that's wavelength.
Come the other way, it's all.
It's not off road, it's wavelength.
Right.
Yeah, cause off road and the nineties wavelength, so the ones on S I is not really ours.
Right, I've just questioned if, does it?
Yeah, I don't know what the spacing is on the, I mean, if you're somewhere beyond that, could you have room to put another one down?
I left my fifteen hundred tape measure home.
Yeah. Bunch of hundred feet, huh?
So you wanted to try to get the administration to push something to Plannin' Zoning, maybe possibly?
Yeah, like get something written up and present to Plannin' Zoning.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, how quick could they have?
But I'd still like to go ahead and move forward and make a motion for a moratorium to give them time to do this instead of putting pressure on, I'm okay with it.
That's what you wanna make a motion of, uh?
Before we make a motion, do we, do we put a moratorium in place or do we just basically say that we were rescinding the, the current ordinance and there shall be no more billboards than the current number of billboards located within the city limits? And then, once we get a dra- a new drafted ordinance, we'll vote that ordinance in to take place of our no more billboards.
We technically have to have an ordinance reduced to writing before we can pass it.
So we can't just do it by motion?
Correct.
I'd see it go through planning and zoning just as quick as we can.
If y'all mind, can we get some more detail too, for what, what exactly you guys want, to make sure we bring you the right thing back?
That's what I was thinking, charter use, special exception, all of them, then we gotta say on everyone that comes through, because none of them could go through without council approval then, be not just, it wouldn't be just on administrative side, but that comes through council. But, then also the regulations that y'all want, no more than a city or?
Are we required to allow billboards?
No.
What'd you ask, Mayor?
If, if we are required by law to provide billboards.
To allow them.
There's actually four states in the nation that don't allow them, period.
That what?
Don't allow them, Hawaii, Vermont, two others. Random fact of the day.
That's states though, right?
Is that the entire state?
Yeah, that state, and there was actually a Supreme Court decision about a year ago.
Do that?
Yeah, yeah, the Supreme Court decision's actually out of the city of Austin, and theirs was, I want to say, they completely banned, um, digital billboards, and the Supreme Court has ruled that's okay to do as well.
And if we did allow, we can stipulate what they maybe look like, and they gotta be.
Well, see that, well.
Can't have just a pipe sticking up, maybe have to be.
Yeah, Jackson's got them.
What they, what they look like, yes, what you can't regulate is the content that's on them.
No, but I mean, like, if we wanna.
Actually, they do regulate the content.
Well, we can't regulate.
You can't put anything pornographic on there, or anything that, um, you know, you couldn't play a movie or nothing like that.
Well, yeah, yeah. But we can't say no political.
Right.
You know, ads or?
But if the council wanted to not allow them on highway ninety, that's an option.
But you just need to go through your planning and zoning and say, you know, change your planning and zoning.
And the, the existing would, would just be grandfathered until they fall down? Or take them down, once they're down, they couldn't put them back up though?
Correct.
Is that, is kinda that where the council would like to go?
And, and I like the mayor's comp, to where do we take out the, the mile, the, you know, two point four from this area and it's within the city limits?
I think it definitely needs to be within city limits, cause whether the city limits change or?
The current city limits.
Current, current city as they are, I, I think we just said within the city limits. You know, that way we're not dealing with the mileage.
After the city limits change from annexation area, it just moves down the road or whatever.
Changes with it.
But is there any direction from y'all on highway six oh three, highway ninety, any street? Total?
I should want.
City ban.
Billboards in the city of Bay St. Louis.
Okay.
I think it's just pretty much the city limits, no more billboards.
From here to the interstate all the way.
Okay. Alright, so. Y'all can work on that?
Yes, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments on signs?
If we.
Any other comments on signs while, while the ordinance will get looked at, any other thoughts?
Oh, I think we ought to eliminate all monument, I mean, all pole signs and, and, um, any new growth. Uh, any property sales, they need to start complying to our current code, which they're not. And, um, and, and also require new businesses to, uh, use monument style signs. There's no reason to keep them, all these pole signs, people don't maintain, most of them out there anyway. I mean, it's, I mean, I can point a couple out, but you know the ones I'm talking about.
Let me just say too, that.
On the power lines, there's a, there's a lot of them on the power lines. OSHA doesn't even allow that, but every time a property gets sold, y'all not forcing them to move those, lot, those, uh, pole signs from under power lines.
That's separate ordinance.
Yeah.
I don't disagree with anything that he's saying.
No, but he said.
No, no, I know, I just want it to be.
He said, anything else.
Harry, I'm not fighting with you, I know, I agree, I'm just saying, like, billboard's focus, I get what you're saying, but that's one, you probably need to sit down and like go through it, cause that's, you understand it, yes. What you're wanting to do desperately needs to be done, but that's a long process. Billboard's much more of a narrow scope, I mean, you're looking at a twenty page document that, the whole sign ordinance and the planning and zoning one, that needs to be talked about, the billboard ones, three pages, it sounds like it's gonna be drastically reduced to a line.
In the city limits of Bay St. Louis.
Pretty much.
Got it.
Yeah.
Any further thing on that, Mister Lewis?
So, Councilman, are you, so I, I just wanna make sure, so we're gonna have that at the next?
Can we put that together for next meeting?
I hope so.
Okay. That's what we're shooting for.
Okay. So the council feels comfortable with that versus moratorium?
Yeah.
Sure.
Awesome.
Any further discussion on that?
I encourage you all to go read it, what's there now, and if you have recommendations or anything else specific, shoot it to Jeremy and myself. So that, you know, we don't have to go back and forth.
Alright, thank you. Any new old business, Mister Hoffman?
Uh, no, not this time.
Mister Seal, you good? Mister Lewis?
I'm good this time.
Mister Zimmerman? Mister Noblock?
Uh, yes, Mike, uh, school board appointments coming up March first. Um, what you planning on doing, you gonna advertise or?
Uh, recommendation of replay, uh, to keep who's on air for that position.
Say that again, you're gonna recommend Casey back on?
Yep. He has expressed interest to stay on. Whereas the other two that was on there, you know, one moved out of Bay in the Diamond Head, and then Vicky was ready to, you know, move aside. Hope to have that for the next meeting.
Any further just? Uh.
Alright, thanks. I'm good.
Good, okay. I'm good, um. Public forum, I think Miss Anne Smith left, she was planning his own. Mister Tab Black? Three minute, uh, public forum. How you doing, sir?
Fine, thank you, sir, appreciate your opportunity.
Yes.
Um, I got out the old zoning book that, uh, was upgraded by Slaughter and Associates that also handled the comprehensive plan. And I obtained this, and I got it out of the attic, I started to look at some things, and, uh, I was looking at the parking lots in C one in the central business district. And I had posted it on, uh, visitors and residents of Bay St. Louis, thinking I'd get a comment, and I got good comments on it, and I got some crazy comments, but anyway, I'm wondering that we, that we have four parking lots in downtown Bay St. Louis. And is this one of the things that was changed? As your city attorney was saying, things about the sign ordinance change with this book? But this book was approved September seventh, two thousand ten, revisited October two thousand, is this the current book that we're going by now? Does anybody know that?
Sir.
It is?
I mean, for the most part.
For the most part, there's been some odd.
Right, well, what happened to, did, did the parking lot under the central business district, did that change? Or is it still that you, they have to be paved and lighted and?
Yes, they do.
It's still the same? Then, I'm asking how did this happen? Did it, did it ask for variances, did it ask for special exceptions? Cause we have four parking lot, three that's paid, paid apart, one is a private parking lot for a business customers own. So I'm asking, I'm asking.
Yes, sir.
How did this happen? I'm just curious. I, I wasn't paying attention to it, I, I knew things had changed, I knew we had talked about those, actually, some of the things that the comprehensive plan people talked about was actually landscaping them also. That's not in here. Uh, I know Mike Cure did a good job landscaping his parking lot next to the, of the church property, nice parking lot. And I have to admit that that's where his sixty-seven car garage was supposed to go, but I'm kinda glad it didn't go there, because we'd have to tear down all them beautiful oak trees. But anyway, that's, that's what, but I'm just curious, I'm asking a question. How did something like this happen without going through planning and zoning, the city council, that we allowed three paid parking lots and a private parking lot in the downtown area, and you're supposed to have pavement, lighting, which that's important, lighting. I mean, nighttime, it's important, and I'm just curious on how this happened.
Yes, sir.
And apparently I'm looking at my council and.
The paving is questioned, cause in, in, in our ordinances, if you look through, it says hard surface.
There's several contradicting.
There's, there's, there's other ordinances that state hard surface is asphalt, is concrete, is limestone, is crushed concrete, is asphalt milling. So that, that's where the.
So you're saying there's another ordinance that may contradict this, is that what you're saying, Mister Mayor?
That states what hard surfaces are.
I mean, is, is that what you're saying, there's another ordinance somewhere that may contradict this ordinance?
Yes.
And where would that be located?
I think that ordinance might contradict itself.
Yeah.
It's been probably a year or two since I've looked at this, but there's definitely multiple ordinances in that.
Well, I mean, you know, every once in a while.
I'm not gonna say that without having it in front of me.
Done once in my lifetime as city councilman for eight years, you codify the ordinance, that's where a team goes in, costs money, it's not cheap. And that's what Slaughter and Associates did in this book.
Yes, sir.
And that's what the, the, uh, the advisory board for the new comprehensive plan, a lot of those things that were talked about and approved by vote on the comprehensive plan advisory board, got put in here. And I was glad to see that. And then, that was years ago, and I just started thumbing through it, and I found this, and I said, well, wait a minute, how did these parking lots appear when this is here? I'm just bringing it up.
The definition of the hard surface and what you just stated is our next step after we do the twenty forty-five vision plan.
Here's the thing, it says free of dust, limestone is dust, it crushes.
That's another thing, right?
Yeah.
Okay?
No.
And there's no handicap parking in the limestone parking lot. Now, how's a person in a wheelchair, not a scooter, an old person that has to be put in a wheelchair, has to roll over limestone? I just don't see that being logical.
The one.
I don't disagree with that.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with some of it. I think the one on the beach, the old Firestone, has handicap parking in it.
The one, where, Mayor, I, I'm sorry.
The one that the old Fire Dog parking lot?
Right.
Has handicap parking in it?
Mike, you have to speak into Mike.
The Fire Dog parking lot does have handicap, the one on Second Street has handicap parking on the outside of the parking lot on Second Street itself, that's attached to that parking lot, so they do have the handicap, do they have enough of it? They have the required, but it's never enough, you know, as far as that goes, we don't, we don't have enough in the whole town, probably.
Right, yeah.
You know?
I would, I would advise it doubling what you got now.
Easy. And Jason is looking at that as far as all, you know, along with striping, you know, for that and all. Um, yeah, and Cure did a great job on his, like you said, down there. Went in, did what he had to do, saved the oak trees and everything, you know, did around them and all.
Plant shrub trees?
The other ones, um, are temporary, they were, they were temporary sites, parking sites, before they were paid parking lots. They went in and at least upgraded some of them, you know, and dressed them up some. Uh, reason most of them went paid parking lots is because the two owners of these parking lots had numerous lawsuits filed against them when they weren't, when they were free parking lots. And that's one of the reasons they did go to pay parking lots on these, it's not permanent parking lots, but it is right now, pa- paid parking, you know?
Well, I, I know Mister Cure told me years ago, um, back before the hotel was even built, he was a concept of his. But unless his plans have changed, but where he has the parking lot on the seawall side, where Mister Ron used to have his house next to the railroad track.
Yep.
Um, he plans on putting condos there.
He's planning on developing that.
That was five or six years ago, he told me that.
Yeah. He does plan on developing that as far as what it is, you know, gonna be, not sure.
Well, he told me that the sixty-seven car garage for the hotel was gonna be where the beautiful oak trees are at, and then he was gonna build a condo. And that he would also, I, I think it would be a walkway from the, the parking garage to the condo at one time, maybe, maybe it was afterthought, maybe I was just dreaming.
Yeah, I don't know.
But anyway, I, you know, I'm going through this book, I see some things happening in our city that I personally feel maybe should be slowed down.
We have addressed the parking lot to where it's pretty much, Heather, I think we voted on that a while back, passed that ordinance with the text amendment to that, where it is saying about the hard surface and defined as asphalt, concrete surfaces. And, you know, where it takes all the ifs, ands, gray area out of it and all.
I ju- I just have a problem, and, and not that I'm an attorney, but to me, that would, that would venture to be that we allowed those parking lots without smooth surfaces and handicap people on walkers? And.
For the handicaps, the handicap is on, again, on Second Street is not in there. It's on the backside on Second Street itself, which is concrete.
Right, I understand.
And then on the Fire Dog one, I think the handicap parking is on that concrete in there. Well, again.
Yeah.
I understand, that, I'm just asking a question, that way I got, I got my ducks in a rut. And thank you, Mister Mayor, for your input, and thank you, council, for your, your time.
Yes, sir.
And we, you know, and again, I wish we could do it all over again.
I mean, I don't, I, I know Mister Cure owns the one by the tracks across from us, it's beautiful parking lot. That's gonna soon become probably condominiums in time, I would imagine, or something. But if there's any way that the city could lease Fire Dogs, the county should've gave the city the property when they had their building there. Whatever, but anyway, um.
Can't go back.
I think that's something they all regret.
I know. No, I mean.
Second Street?
They could've gave it to you, you know?
Yes, sir.
We've given them stuff before, property and stuff over the years, swapped out, you know? Well, if there's any way that we could lease, rent, uh, you know, for a while, we, you know, with the parking lot, used to run between the Fire Dog and all that, but it was privately owned. And I remember we as a council and city taxpayer paid ten thousand dollars to have it appraised, to buy it. And then the, the father that Leo Seals lived in Florida, and Leo Seals had a handshake deal for many years, you know, on that, on that property. And, and of course, the city did end up requiring, acquiring that property, so that was a good move, but I'm just thinking for future, if any of this property, like the Fire Dog people, I don't think they'll ever sell. I think one day, I've heard that, I know there's three partners involved with it, but you know, in the meantime, we could, and, and actually make it a nice parking lot, and landscape it. And still keep it paid parking, that way the city would get something.
Well, you know, we did look at that, and again, you know, government moves pretty slow.
Don't tell me, I worked for, for five years.
Same thing with the old Echo building, would've been a great add-on to the garage we have.
Yeah.
And again, it, it just.
Well, I mean, parking, some people don't care, but parking is becoming a problem. I mean, we, we keep allowing these businesses open and.
We, we, we have counting paid parking lot, we got three times the amount of parking than we did before Katrina.
Yeah, well, you got a lot of down.
Three times.
You got a lot of downed buildings.
Yeah. And we don't have the buildings that was there. Besides the hotel, we don't have the buildings that was there before. And that's not counting hotel parking, that's not counting Caracas parking, or whatever that bar, right, the bar on Main Street, Gabby's old place? That's not counting private parking at all.
You can't park in Gabby's.
That's what I'm saying, that's not counting those.
They'll tow you off.
This, this is just street parking, free parking, garage, harbor, and paid parking. We have more than three times the parking than we did prior to Katrina.
Well, with all the businesses, we need some more.
Yeah.
Oh, no doubt.
But, yeah, I appreciate, Mister Mayor, you chiming in on and enlightening me on some things, and city attorney, the council. But like I said, if there's any way we could lease, purchase, or do something to make a nicer parking lot, you know, I don't know what people that own the Fire Dog property, but you know, sooner or later, we're gonna, we're gonna need, I mean, the comprehensive plan suggested, I, I don't agree with.
You know, we looked at different things, we looked at the ride, adding on, I think it can handle one more.
Sixty-six thousand dollars per spot.
But you, man, the expense for those few parking fines.
Sixty-six thousand dollars per spot.
We looked at down on the beach, you know, down on the north side of the harbor, you know, we looked at this, the other properties and all, and it's just, it's, it's finding it.
Cause the comprehensive plan, Bob, that the last Zoom meeting we had, he, he was re, I don't know what's gonna come out in, I think.
Gonna be nice.
It, well, they're talking about putting, when you build a building, you put parking on the top. That was a suggestion.
He's also looking at a place in the middle of, in, in the middle of Main.
On the small lot.
In the middle of Main Street and, what is that, Court Street? Yeah, and where you would have building retail on the street side, and behind it would be.
Level park?
Yeah.
Let's make them look.
It's gonna come out good with it.
And, 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 and do it where it's, it's pretty, it's just not a bunch of concrete.
Yep.
You know, just a bunch of concrete stuck up there, but anyway, I, I do thank y'all, council and mayor.
Okay, Mister Ed, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Cliff Rablai? Yeah, we blew that one.
Thank you, I did come to talk to support Ms. Anne at one oh nine Carroll, but that was taken care of. Want to thank you, gentlemen, for doing just what Mr. Black was talking about, sticking to yard. That's what y'all did with that P and Z request, because it would not have passed his original request. So, but you gentlemen said this is what the ordinance is, and you stuck to it, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think I'm gonna say one thing y'all have heard me say before, where there's no enforcement, there are no rules.
I think we all learn as time goes on.
Yeah.
Thank you. You did good.
You ain't getting that extra minute next time.
That ain't all yours, though, so. Uh, let's see here, project updates, Mr. Canici. Look like him, I can't, I hate Mr. Reeves not here tonight for this motion.
I know, right?
They're waiting twenty years. We can wait till the next meeting.
Why, I need to get him on the phone.
Yeah, seven years.
Yeah, so the first item tonight is motion authorized, we finally received authorization from MDOT to advertise for destruction bids for fire drive sidewalk improvements and wash industry. And so we need authorization from the council to prepare those advertisements, to get them submitted. MDOT's a little bit different, we have to go through the clearing ledger, so we have to work out those schedules with them. So I'm not, I don't have dates tonight as far as when we're gonna actually advertise it, but we wanted to go and get the authorization tonight. We can get that process going, and we do have sixty days to advertise based on MDOT's approval.
Okay. Motion, Mr. Seal, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman. Uh, discussion on that. Discussion, so that's been so long.
Two thousand sixteen.
Yeah, so, uh, so where's this money coming from, and how much we have to match?
It's a match, so it's two hundred eighty thousand dollar grant, seventy thousand dollar match for a total of three hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So is that even gonna be enough to do this project after two thousand sixteen?
We don't know. Well, we don't know.
We've updated the cost assessment, GRPC, they are able, the funding agency Gulf Regional Planning Commission, they can add twenty percent to the grant without any type of approval from the, from the planning.
Okay.
Um, they've also told, all these projects, they've held out money because everything's coming in higher. Uh, and so they've got extra funds that if the bids are high, then they can put, if they need more than that twenty percent, then they can allocate those additional funds. It just depends on what it comes in at and who else is bidding at the same time.
So basically, we know there's probably gonna be a good chance that we have to get more funds allocated. I think Gulf Regional Planning knows that, so.
This will be the first.
Yeah.
I mean, because their process is, I mean, we're not the only one, it's the way their lines of funding goes, so it'll probably end up having to go back to them to get more funds, but they know that and they're open to it, and I don't think anybody anticipates that being a problem.
But once we get the bids received and.
Yeah, but we have to get the bids in order.
Got a definite number, to know what we need.
Yeah, and then we'll bring them back a definite number.
Yeah, okay, all right, any further discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion passes six zero, thank you.
Thank you for that, um, that was the only act item we had, if there's any questions on our report, I'd be happy to.
Was that for both, did we, that was for both of them, both of the projects?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, because remember, they're being, everything's being done together, you join those.
Right.
You got any harbor updates on repairs?
Hurricane repairs?
Any repairs?
Uh, so we waited, or we submitted the one bid we received for the harbor repair, uh, that did not include dredging. Uh, that was submitted back to FEMA, I think those bids were received in October. We turned in a request for additional funds for a cost adjustment to FEMA, and they're still evaluating.
Also, what happened to that project on looking at Good and Fiber Street Canal for a possible dredging?
So we've completed the survey of those areas, um, I don't remember exactly how many canals we did, um, but it was, I think it was about twenty or thirty that we scanned. Now we're working with a material testing lab, a permitting consultant to get the material sampled, tested. So then the DMR can approve it as a benefit for you, then we can go back to the state to secure fund the dredge there.
How long you think that takes? The buyer's street project?
You'll be in a walker, you'll be in a walker.
I'd rather not comment.
Somebody made the comment early, move slow.
Jason, do you want to just give an update on where we are with our ARPA project? I know you, I think, had more crews working in the last few weeks.
Yeah, so they're, the phase one is getting close to being completed, that's where they're cleaning and CCTVing all the lines, the gravity sewer lines throughout the city. Uh, they're also inspecting all the manholes. Uh, they did add additional forces back before Christmas, so they had five inspection trucks running around. Um, the manhole cleaning, um, they're about a little over halfway finished with looking at all the manholes. We're processing all the information as they get it to us, the reports and the videos. Uh, so we're starting to look at phase two repairs, which would be lining what we can, any point repairs that need to take place. Um, and then we've also got some of our crews that are gonna start doing drawdown tests on the lift stations. Um, the way we set all this up, you know, the manholes and the sewer lines were, were, you know, to be repaired initially. Um, we're also looking at, uh, do we want to add some lateral sewer connections that come into the mains? We want to come in and repair some of those. So all that will be discussed and reviewed once we get all the final report, and then we can come back with a, with a plan for you guys for moving on to phase two.
And are you working with the county on some of this, so y'all can pool your funds?
Yeah, so the county's participated in it as well, uh, with some of their ARPA funds. And we've also submitted additional grant requests for GMASA and Restore Fund, to cover some of the.
And so this is where the county sent over some of their ARPA funds, we're not necessarily working with the county as much as it is, it's just an agreement and a reimbursement process.
How much are you looking at?
Well, we estimate.
Well, how much did the county give?
They gave seven hundred.
Seven hundred.
And then the state matched that.
Yeah.
And then the state matched whatever the city's allocation, but three and a half.
Three point four.
Three point four.
So.
And we think total cost to line everything, all the sewer lines, all the sewer mains, upgrade the main lift station, we're looking at somewhere around twelve and a half million, so we estimated, that's why we submitted additional funds to GMASA and Restore to cover that. We got about eight point five.
That's probably gonna be one of the most significant projects we've ever done for the city, because nobody ever looks at sewer lines.
Oh, yeah.
Only look at when they back up.
You only see it when it backed up.
Yeah.
Unsexy project, very beneficial.
Well, I was on Ramonita one time when the sewer cover popped up. Yeah.
And then having the videos and the big, it'll make it a nice shovel-ready project, so if anybody ever calls or, or if we, and one thing Jason's gonna look at, when it all comes down, if there, there might be some, you know, say if there was something that was close to a body of water that would make it eligible for a different pot of funds, you might be able to, to reach out to a different agency and say, hey, we've got this, we've got the video, and so then you can use your ARPA, because you can use your ARPA funds anywhere around the city. So that's one of the things that Jason's keeping an eye out on, too, is we get the video footage back.
Good, good deal, thank you, anything else? I'm good, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate you, hope you had a good holiday. Next up, City Clerk's report, motion to approve the Bay St. Louis Dock of the Claims number two four dash zero zero three dated June, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, one hundred and two dollars and seventy-nine cent. Motion, Mr. Seal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, any further discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes six zero. B is motion to approve the Bay St. Louis Dock of the Claims number two four dash zero zero six special, dated January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of three hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and fifteen cent. Do I have a motion? I'll make a motion, uh, with discussion. No block. Well, actually, I'm gonna change the motion. Uh, so, I tell you what, let me, let me discuss what we want to do first. So, we're making a loan from the municipal reserve fund, and for a hundred thousand dollars, the only thing I want to do is, uh, make a motion to do this, but it's paid back within, by the, uh, with the receipt of the second ad verum check.
It will, it will be.
Hmm? Well, I want, okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the Dock of the Claims three, one point one, six point two four, special, and that the loan to the, from the general, uh, from the municipal, uh, miss, from the reserve fund to the general fund be paid back with the receipt of the first ad verum, the second ad verum payment. Okay. Which is usually the end of January or February. You got that, Ms. Caitlin? Okay, all right, motion, Mr. No Block, do I have a second? Second, Mr. Seal, any further discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, passes six zero, thank you. C, motion to approve the Bay St. Louis Dock of the Claims number two four dash zero zero seven, tractor supply dated January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and ninety-four cent. Motion, Mr. Seal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, any further discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes six zero, thank you, anything else, Mr. Rissel?
That's it.
That's it, okay. Consent agenda items A through A B. Do I have a motion?
Um, let's see, hold on, please. So we talked about this insurance thing, can we pull that out?
Yeah, let's pull that out.
Okay.
I haven't read it, and I'm like.
All right, A, pull A out. Okay. And Mr. Rosetti is here, so if we got any questions, um, we can talk to him real quick if y'all want. Yeah, I was looking at your driver's list, there's a lot of drivers here, don't even work here anymore. I noticed that, too. So can you resubmit this to us with an updated list?
But the driver's list, you.
The driver's list, you can just change, it doesn't have any bearing on. I know, but some of them have been gone for years, so, yeah.
What's that? We get updates.
Yeah, okay. It won't change the premium, so that won't affect anything on the policy. Well, I would like a list of the current drivers that we have, so that you can check the driver's records to make sure that they don't pose a problem with it. Because I know I have to submit driving records to my insurance agent, and it does affect my premiums, especially if they have a DUI on their, on their thing that we don't know about, right?
We're on top. We're on top.
Okay, write the list, and then we can vote on it. When's this gotta be approved by?
Policy goes into effect. Twenty.
Today, sixteenth.
Well, yeah. I just got it, I don't know when we put that on the agenda, but Sunday was not on the agenda when I, I'm homeworking.
Actually, we received it, the industry, in a little disarray, so we received it on twelve, and I've got it to y'all. So we have received it, I got it to y'all.
I wouldn't, I didn't review it, and I honestly won't vote, and not against, I just, I haven't reviewed it, so I won't vote on it.
And this is for the fire department buildings?
Right.
Personal property? He's, yes, sir.
John, can you just discuss if there's any changes between what we currently have and what's in front of the council? Is it the same from last year?
Yeah, there's, as you add and delete equipment, trucks, we make the update, that's added, when you, the buildings that's on there, the fire equipment, breathing apparatus, all the equipment, it's automatic. WAFIS does it, they don't want to keep up with every equipment that's on, so that's automatically added. So basically, what you're doing is you're adding, deleting vehicles, if we do any changes to the buildings, we don't. WAFIS, their rates, I mean, that's all the fire. I wish we can get these rates on this building.
And if you look on page eleven, the document, you have an updated driver's list on the court sheet that is different than the one you're looking at in the back.
Y'all, that's what, y'all have the court on.
The court sheet is in all, on the computer I have, yes, and if you look through it, it shows number thirteen, fourteen.
There's two different softwares, this one software is one of the older software, and the court application is when Mike and Jamie have given this add, delete, add, delete, add, delete. That's the internal document that we use as the Bible, and this is just a Microsoft Word.
I don't know all of them, but the court sheet looks a lot more accurate than the one Mr. No Block's referring to, because I think names that hasn't been.
Which one was that here? So these are the names of. PC KG Accord.
Sure, look at that one.
Accord.
If you pull up, look at the board sheet on page eleven.
Where is it at?
Page eleven on the court sheet and the file.
Page five of twenty.
So pull up A? Yes.
A B.
Oh, I see.
Page eleven.
And then scroll down.
Capital A, little b, page eleven.
Then scroll to page eleven, and you'll see the driver's list that he's referring to, that's checked. Which is a whole lot cleaner than the other one. But you still have, um, people on here that don't even work here anymore. Page eleven, okay. Most of them look current to me, I mean, I don't know them all, but most of them look pretty current compared to the ones I've seen it. Haven't been here in a few years, what this is. Doc, we have this old list up here.
This, this is from a Word document, and it doesn't relate to the board document that you're looking at there. So, when we're in a hurry to do this, to get this to you in time, the board is the Bible, which we sign off on, you don't sign off on this.
Yeah.
And then the court, as you add drivers or add employees or delete employees, that has to come from the city.
Looks good on there, I say, I know this is what Mr. No Block was referring to, I saw it myself earlier, but the court's accurate looking, so.
So the, the amount is not gonna change anything, can we, can we get it approved to pay and with, and have an updated sheet sent?
Yeah, I'll just take that Excel one off the document, document maybe, you know, or update it, so, I'm good with it.
You only got eleven drivers showing that, not all twenty-three.
Exactly, yeah, when you compare it.
So page five has, has eleven drivers, or twelve drivers, page eleven has ten drivers. So we have twenty-three drivers total in a fire department.
And I see one on there, needs to be removed.
Well, I think two of them.
What we're saying, so page five is one through twelve, page eleven is thirteen through twenty-three.
Yes.
So we have twenty-three drivers who we insure. I mean, that's correct, I mean, everybody drives in the fire department, I'm assuming, because it's any big, or, these are all, all, all fire.
If you have two fifties, Durangos, everything's on the court, yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah, it's all that.
All, any truck or anything.
Poppers, ladders. Yes.
Not just fire trucks.
No.
No, no, they don't all drive the trucks.
I wonder if it was different, because fire truck, fire, fire apparatus machines versus a pickup truck.
Right.
But this insurance policy covers all the vehicles in the fire department.
It covers everything.
Even the regular pickups and everything.
John, how do you handle, I mean, I'm sure, but if you get a new employee that's gonna be on, need to be on the list, you can just add them to it without it, I mean.
Yeah, I mean.
Basically, human resources has to let us know.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like, probably hard, but I can't help it, so I have to be notified, they're added to the board, taken off to the board.
That's a running back, I mean.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm good with it, so. Do you want to make a separate motion on this, to take another consent agenda?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna vote on it tonight, because I haven't been able to review the documents, sorry about that, but.
Okay. Um, do I have a motion to approve the renewal of insurance through V F I S and uninsured motorists for the fire department vehicles? Motion, Mr. Lewis, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr., you know what, I'll block, Mr. No Block. Any further discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five one.
Doug, are you voting no, or are you abstaining?
Well, if I vote no or abstain, if I abstain, my vote goes with the majority, right?
No, if you abstain, you're just abstaining.
Okay, so if I abstain, don't, my vote doesn't go to the majority?
No, if you abstain, it's documented as abstained.
Okay, I'm staying then, because I don't want to go with majority vote.
We vote no, that means you're voting against.
Either way, I didn't read it, we didn't get it in time, so.
So five.
We shouldn't be voting on it.
Mr. Seal, abstaining.
Well, and I will tell y'all, just because I've sat through a whole lot of board meetings, and this was gotten to you earlier than most of them that I represent, and, I mean, I work with a whole bunch of boards, and usually. this was gotten to you earlier than most of them that I represent, and, I mean, I work with a whole bunch of boards, and usually it is handed out by the insurance agent at the meeting, and they go through it there, so I know it's not, I don't, I don't think it's, you know, I don't think the insurance agents like it either, but this is, this is, I'm seeing this with car insurance, health insurance, property insurance, the gambit, so just know that, that is industry standard. In fact, a lot of them, these days, they're getting to where their policies are act- actually already in their expiration period, and they still haven't been able to get people to respond to them, so.
The racket.
Insurance is tough market right now.
Hopefully, one more year.
Rich market, it's a very rich market.
Hopefully, one more year, I hope so. Hope so, appreciate Ms. Rosetti, thank you, sir. All right, consent agenda items B through A B, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Mr. No Block, do I have a second, Mr. Hoffman, any further discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Motion passes six zero, thank you. Uh, ten is the city council minutes to be approved from January second, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting.
Motion, no changes required.
Motion, Mr. Seal, Caitlin did a good job.
Keep writing less and less, so she had less time.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes, was you an eye on that, Mr. No Block, on the minutes?
Yeah, aye.
Okay, sorry, six zero, anything, Ms. Smith?
All my stuff's covered.
Okay, need motion to adjourn. Motion, Mr. Seal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, all in favor?
Aye.
Go stay warm.
I was unanimous.
Motion to go back to work.
I'm distracted, yeah.